Is there a list of what the agenda stuff's going on?
Uh, yes. I'll give you my copy that I need it.
I think Nicole might have some handouts.
Hey, Joe.
Yeah, hi, John.
I see you there. How many of, how many commissioners do we have?
Just Danielle, Eric, and myself. Well, I don't, I don't know who's, who's online. People could have opted because of the weather to maybe go remote.
There's no, there's no council, there's no planning commission members online.
John? John?
Yeah.
Let's give it like a five-minute weather delay. It's already six thirty, but like I said, it's, it's getting a little bit gnarly outside again.
Is it snowing?
Yeah, it started about maybe forty minutes ago.
All right, so Silas just hopped on, so we do have four.
Cool.
Thank you.
Silas is online, so we can.
Just the four of us here?
Just us and the only one that I know that's online is Silas right now. So I said I'll do a five-minute weather delay, just in case somebody else will drag on, until we're, we're good to go.
He's the shortest.
Yeah, he's on the right side.
Stock and caps are in order in this meeting?
Yes, they are.
You have to get on a bad time that you had the shortest commute to this place, and then you decided.
And I was thinking about doing the same thing, but I said I'd just kick, clean the car up, and the roads aren't that bad.
No, the roads aren't bad at all.
How's your car doing, because the cross-rack is great, and I don't even have the snow tires.
Are you Terry?
I am Terry Sapp.
Hi.
And I can tell who you are because you have a title.
Hi, Terry. Joe Fatisi, pleased to meet you.
Say it again.
Joe Fatisi.
Hi, Joe, I'm Terry Sapp.
Hi, we're gonna, we, we have you definitely on the agenda for, for later on.
Yes.
And we're just giving it a couple-minute weather delay before I open the meeting up in just a couple of minutes.
You are the chair of this.
I, I am, yes.
You're an extra lower.
I'm looking forward to Thursday.
Danielle, I see your name on the.
Pleased to meet you.
There you are, say your last name for me.
I'm Freyberger.
Easy enough?
Yes, just like it should be, we took German, you know, way back when. I thought you might have a whole bunch of people here because of the public hearing.
Well, we, we were kind of hoping, considering that there's three public hearings, but.
I think it's the snow.
Definitely, I think it's the snow, yeah.
We might get a few people online, we'll see.
Oh, true, because that can be citizens as well as. Good evening. You made it through the snow.
All-wheel drive.
Nicole, let me know when you're ready, and then I'll get moving on this, okay?
Are we recording yet?
Phil, are we recording?
Yes, we're recording.
So, so ladies and gentlemen, I'm about ready to open the meeting. And at that point, would everybody stand for the, I'm sorry, meeting is opened at six thirty-six PM on December twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Can people please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States.
Of the United States of America. To the republic. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So onto our roll call, Commissioner Freyberger.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson.
Present.
Commissioner Frenette. Absent. Commissioner Maddox?
Uh, I'm here.
Okay, Commissioner Maddox is present and online. Commissioner Fatisi, present. Commissioner Huggins, are you, are you around? Absent. So with that, can we move on to the first item on our agenda? And that would be our approval of consent agenda items from the, except the November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting. Has everyone had the opportunity to take a look at it?
You meant the minutes from, okay.
I didn't see any changes or updates that needed happening.
There, there was just one on the last sentence we have that the next planning commission meeting scheduled for December twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Just a really minor typo, so that should just be December twenty twenty-two.
Thanks, Joe.
Yeah, it's, it's minor.
No big deal, I can fix it.
So at this time, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two?
I'd still move.
I have a first from Commissioner Freyberger. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Johnson. Is there anything that anyone else would like to discuss? If no, I will take a motion to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? No one. Motion carries, so we will move on now to our next item, which is our general public comments section of the meeting. So with that, Bill, do we have anyone online that, let me just read a little bit of a disclosure here. If anyone wishes to speak, please limit comments to three minutes or less. Comments may also be submitted via email or mail ahead of the hearing and read into the record. The instructions to submit comments are published prior to planning commission meetings on the monthly commission agenda. And if you would like to speak, please state your name, address, or any group that you represent. So I will open up the general public comments meeting at, portion, I'm sorry, at six thirty-nine. And at this point, do we have any emails or mail that needs to be read into the record? Nope. Any audience members wishing to speak in the general public comments, which is different than what you folks are here for?
Different than what's on here?
Correct, yes. Though, though, you'll have that, that opportunity to go specifically to those items at that time. This is just if you have some general comment of really anything going on in the city, or an action that would be in front of us, not on the current agenda. Is there anyone online that would like to make a general public comment? With that, I'm assuming the answer would be no, so I will now close the general public comments section at six forty PM. Onto our next item. Public hearing number one, as published. It's a possible amendment, I'm sorry. Possible amendments to create a new chapter in Title seventeen SWMC to address state requirements for homeless encampments operated by religious organizations. And at this time, before I open anything up, John and Nicole, would you like to start us off here?
Yeah, I got, got this. So the planning commission heard and reviewed proposed amendments to the homeless encampment ordinance at its last meeting. This affects, uh, this affects homeless encampments at religious organizations. And it doesn't preclude the allowance of homeless encampments, but it puts bounds on how they are operated and puts a requirement for a permit for a homeless encampment. And it, these regulations also have regulations for safe parking, which is different than homeless encampment. But like, uh, living in one's car at a religious institution's parking facility, so it also creates regulations for that. Although there is no permit process created for safe parking. These regulations are based on state requirements. So we made sure that we were following the, the state requirements for homeless encampments, because the, um, there's several things that cities can't do, such as preclude them. So we're creating rules that meet all the state requirements. Like to also point out that after the planning commission's discussion, they had a couple of, they had a couple of comments. And our city attorney's office worked, um, made the requested amendments. And again, Tara Kilar is here from our city attorney's office. And Tara can answer any questions that you might have about the ordinance itself. And then we also reached out to all of the churches in the city limits that have, that have property that I was aware of. And so I emailed and/or called the North Cascades Christian Fellowship, Central United Methodist Church, Bethlehem Lutheran Church, Inspire Church, First Baptist Church, and McElie Heart of Mary Catholic Church. I also reached out to Family Promise and Helping Hands, because they have, um, they also work with homeless populations. And made sure everybody was aware of the hearing today, as well as pointed them to where they could get information. Where there was, they could see the ordinance that we're proposing. And I had some good conversations with some of those, or people at those organizations, and they appreciated us reaching out to them. I do not see anybody online that is from any of those organizations. But they did have the opportunity, and we discussed some of the, the ordinance on, by phone, and I emailed them information. So since the planning commission did work on this in December, I'm not going to go over the details of the proposal. In the memo, I did mention the two places in the ordinance that Tara made amendments to, to address the planning commission's comments from the last meeting. So that's all I have to present. If, if you have any questions for myself or Tara, you can do that now, or you can wait until after opening the public here.
Yeah, this, this was just a quick question. The organizations you reached out to, they were the ones that had the minimum one acre, uh, what do you call it? Size capacity to handle a facility like this, is that correct?
I just reached out to all the churches with significant property. If I missed any, I apologize. I kind of did a mental mapping throughout the, the city to, to find all of the ones. But churches that own like a storefront or a, um, or lease space, those, I wasn't, those I did not reach out to. I didn't have contact information. But I think I got everybody.
Yeah, no, then you have a very good mental map, by the way, so I'm not even going to question that. So prior to opening up our public hearing number one, if you would like to speak, please state your name and address, or any group or organization you represent. So I will now open public hearing number one at six forty-six PM. So if there is any member in the audience that would like to comment, please stand forward and just state your name, address, and any organization.
Philip Murray, mailing address one oh one West Woodworth. Yeah, I'm curious if, if any of these churches are actually going to allow any homeless there, to stay there. If they, they put in application for it or anything. If not, it seems like you're just kind of spinning your wheels and putting a damper on everything before it even comes about. Hopefully someone will step up and help some of these people out there. I noticed the library was closed today, which is a heating place to warm up, and it wasn't there for people. And it's not very nice out, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else in the audience? I think the answer is no. Is there anyone online that would like to make any statements? Bill, how many people do we have online currently? I just see five.
There are more than five people online.
Okay.
But, um, some of them are staff and some are, um, and commission members.
Okay, I, I know we also have the ability to testify or present something via phone. Is there anyone on our phone bank, or however you handle that side? Is anybody requesting from the phone side to make any statements?
Just, just the, through Zoom.
Okay. So at this particular point, let's just give it another minute in case somebody comes online. I think this topic is so important, and the fact that all we had was one individual wanting to testify. I just want to give everybody the benefit of the doubt that we actually did wait, and want to hear what people had to say before I close this particular public meeting and we move on to our own internal discussions. Go ahead, I'm listening.
Joe, while you're waiting, we could acknowledge, it looks like Pat, Commissioner Pat Huggins has joined on Zoom.
Thanks, Pat.
Sorry I'm late.
You're here.
Just shoveling driveway.
So when my digital clock hits six fifty, I'll, I'll close the meeting unless somebody in the next, like I said, sixty seconds would like to have a say. Eerily quiet. Okay, I will close public hearing number one at six fifty PM. Now at this time, I'm going to open it up to my fellow planning commissioners for further discussion. Commissioner Johnson, would you like to open up?
Certainly. And I think, I mean, we, we've addressed this a couple of times now, and I've said most of my piece on it. I guess I will just keep my comments succinct and kind of do the, the infamous positive, negative, positive, uh, sandwich critique. I, I think it's smart that the city is getting ahead of this, um, while they have the chance. I mean, homelessness is everywhere. It is an issue, and whether we like it or not, it's probably going to increase in Woolley, just as it's increased in almost all municipalities across the state over the past few years. So putting some sort of framework on this, I think, is, um, smart. And I think it's the city doing its due diligence on behalf of its citizenry. The negative, I'm, I'm still, I'm really worried about the enforcement piece of this. You know, I, I wish, and I, I realize the limitations, um, on this. And, uh, the fact that, you know, we're, we're trying not to be necessarily too aggressive with this. But I just, you know, just, I'm, I'm just going to reiterate my concern that I'm, I'm kind of worried about the enforcement mechanism. I know, uh, I had a conversation, a separate conversation with a friend of mine who works with Family Promise, and he's a volunteer there. And he was reaching out to me to help volunteer. And while I, I wasn't available at the time, um, you know, he, he did make the comment that, you know, they have been struggling to find volunteers. And, um, you know, I think that that's, that's not just in regards to organizations dealing with homelessness. I think that, that's just kind of a universal problem. Most people aren't volunteering nowadays. And so, you know, whether or not there will be adequate staffing to properly monitor and regulate these things is a bit of a question mark. You know, I would hope that there is, and I sincerely hope that, you know, we're able to staff these and these organizations can run these properly. But I, I have, I have my doubts and my worries. But finally, I'll, I'll just say that I'm glad that we are addressing homelessness, rather than kicking it down the road or trying to sweep it under the rug. I'm glad that we're, we are trying to do, take steps where we can, when we can, to walk that fine line between, you know, taking care of our citizens who are able to help themselves and maybe, um, don't necessarily want to have to, you know, see an increase in homelessness in our community. But at the same time, trying to help those who may not necessarily be able to help themselves or are just in situations that are out of their control, and they've experienced circumstances that have led them to this point. You know, I, I think that this will kind of help centralize, um, encampments. And I think religious organizations are good vehicles to help provide services, because I think that these people probably need some mental health services, some substance abuse services, social services, what have you. And this probably helps identify these people, because it'll help congregate them, help centralize them, and make it easier for social workers to reach out to them. So I think that there are a lot of positives, and I think that, um, you know, our, our homeless neighbors will benefit from it. So even in spite of my reservations, I still, I support moving forward with this and recommending it, that the council pass.
Commissioner Freyberger?
They're pretty minor things, but just a question for our legal representative there. I guess a point of clarification. For on page eleven, seventeen one ten dot oh six oh, under revocation of permit. In that first paragraph, it says that the director may revoke a temporary homeless encampment permit for violation of any of the requirements of this chapter. And then it goes on to mention two of those, just to call those out specifically, I assume. Is that, that the reason? And to make special mention of those, since it already states that it may be revoked for any of the violation of any of the, um, requirements?
Sure, let me just navigate there, one second. Okay, so you're referring to one seven point one one zero point zero six zero?
That's correct. So the, the first sentence just says that the director may revoke this permit for violation of any of the above requirements for the permit. And then it goes on to basically call out in the next two sentences, two of those instances. So I was just kind of, um, wondering why those specifically, just to reinforce that, or? I was thinking perhaps it should say including the following, but I, I wasn't sure, so.
To a certain extent, the, the, um, what it calls out is behavior that's not typical of any other zoning violation, right? There's nowhere else in seventeen that talks about the behavior of the residents. So specifically that was put in there, so, um, that the director has that authority to, if there are, you know, behavioral incidents. It's not a, you can't make that a criteria under the permit, although there is a section under here where people must abide by a code of conduct. This is just kind of a failure to abide by that code of conduct.
Okay.
But that was also a very specific concern, too, of the planning commission, the last time this was heard. It, it did not change, but, uh, I think it does create an additional hook, an enforcement mechanism that might not otherwise be available in other parts of Chapter seventeen that would need to be specifically addressed for this particular type of permit.
Thank you.
Just to elaborate on that a little bit more, uh, one of my concerns, before I move on to our other commissioners, is, uh, is that the situation where we're running multiple trips of PD or EMTs to some of these sites. And in this particular case, when we're talking about acts of violence and substance abuse, or whatever we have that we want to codify, don't we want to put a little bit, a little bit more teeth in it, that if you, if you exceed X amount of, uh, let's say, PD calls in a specific. a specific period of time, that's going to constitute a violation of that requirement as well? You see, resources are limited, they're not endless, but in a lot of particular cases, when you set up these facilities, a lot of people utilize them as just basically a free place to stay. And I'm not saying that's the case all the time, but we're going to be talking about that, this a little bit regarding parking. How do we handle campers? But I'm going to get to that point when it's, when it's my time to talk. But in this particular case, if we're, we're looking at specific acts that are illegal, bottom line, don't we want to put something in there that actually adds into it? So it doesn't seem so subjective, right? It's like, oh, well, somebody got into a fight, and oh, yeah, there was an act of violence. But if PD was called in and they actually filed some type of police report based upon that action, that might be a little bit stronger to give the city the ability and the director the ability to say, hey, you had your warnings, you had your chances, but these are the rules, and, you know, this is, you knew what you were getting into from day one. So I wouldn't mind seeing something in there that actually puts something in place, that we have a mechanism that is legally binding as well. What are your thoughts on that?
Part of the beauty of this proposal is that it gives the director a wide amount of discretion in imposing the penalties. So to the extent that we do not deviate too much from the existing enforcement mechanisms that apply to other types of permits, my recommendation would be to stick with the existing process and allowing the director kind of that wide latitude to say, okay, this was one very egregious act of violence, your permit's revoked, or there have been several, but they've been minor, you know, not draws on resources. I think that discretion is something that is pretty essential to the enforcement mechanism because as, as soon as you start kind of making a contract out of the legislation, it will get very difficult to, you're stuck to that, right? So the director then has to take action if those types of things are triggered. So I would say in general, if you can steer away from putting like a specific number of police calls, that would trigger action on behalf of the director, steer away from that and, and really stick with the wide amounts of discretion because that is where the city can really make those determinations.
Okay. From, from the way I was viewing it, this, this would just be something that gives them a reason for not only making that decision, but there's facts behind it that it doesn't feel like it's subjective, like, oh, well, was the director having a bad day today? Right? You don't want to get into that so that, to me, I would just write it as a little bit ambiguous because it does give us a lot of flexibility, but we also want to make sure that we have the authority to back it up for, for other reasons. But I think Title 18 covers a lot of that as well, so I'm not going to belabor the point. But thank you. Okay, Commissioner Maddox.
I am generally in favor of this. I don't have any specific concerns about it. I do, I appreciate counsel's advice on that last issue. You know, I think that having wide latitude because it is hard to, you know, if the cops are called for something that turns out to be nothing, or, you know, there is one very egregious action, you know, I think that it's important to have, you know, the discretion of the, some discretion in how to deal with these things. If an encampment is becoming problematic, maybe there hasn't been a history of police calls, but there's, it's obvious that there's a problem there. And so, anyway, I'm in favor of going ahead and advancing this.
Thank you. Commissioner Huggins.
Hi. I, I think that Commissioner Johnson's synopsis pretty well summed it up for me. I mean, that's pretty much my, my feelings about the positives and the negatives, and I feel that we're at the point here where we have to trust that we've done pretty much everything we can and need to let this run and see how it, and see how it works. We can tweak it later, but, but I think that we're getting to the point where, like Ms. Quinn said, that if we, if we, if we start putting a lot of screws to it, then it's going to make it hard for them to do it. So it's like anything we do with planning, when you get about 95% of the way there, then, then you need to, to see how it goes. So, yeah, I'm, I'm concerned about this because it feels like, in a way, like an invitation. On the other hand, I agree with Mr. Johnson that the, that the city's really smart to get out in front of this. So I also, I guess I'm positive moving forward on this. So, anyway, that's, that's my feelings.
Thank you. So the only thing I had a question on was more of a technical aspect of it. It was in 17110.030, number seven, and it deals with parking. Okay, parking for a minimum five vehicles shall be provided. I see a lot of people in campers. How do we deal with the camper issue? And I'm using this as an example. So the Skagit Motel seems to get quite a bit of, let's say, a lot of different people living in that space that I could easily see those types of individuals potentially needing a camp like this to get them through a tough time. But I've also noticed this black camper there that just is parked on the outside, and we don't have really anything in here that deals with vehicles that are a heck of a lot larger than a typical, let's say, nine by 18 or 24-foot parking spot. How are we going to handle the camper aspect of it? Or is this something we can worry about later on, John or Nicole? Thoughts?
I think this is something for Tara to weigh in on.
Sure. Well, a couple of thoughts there. It sounds like, you know, the motel situation is not a religious organization, and this proposal is very specific to the religious organization aspect. So that being said, there is, you, there is an ordinance right now that exists that says that the motorhomes cannot be parked for, I believe it's 30 days. Correct me if I'm wrong, John.
Correct.
And that is already a violation of the zoning code. The city could take action, basically starting with a letter all the way to perhaps a public nuisance or a lawsuit, something to that effect. There are regulations that exist on the parking issue of RVs.
Yeah, but my question was more, the individuals that are going to use these facilities, and I'm not looking at that one particular issue, are we saying that you cannot have a camper and now decide that you're going to utilize one of these homeless encampments as a temporary shelter? Is that what we're saying here by just saying five vehicles and not allowing campers? Because that's what, kind of what I'm hearing.
Because I hadn't considered the camper issue. I don't read this as prohibiting campers as a facet of safe parking.
But that runs in, that's contrary to the code where it's 30 days. So now, are we saying, because somebody will show up with a camper, guarantee you, okay? So we're saying now that you have 180 days to be part of this homeless encampment and have your camper on that site. And I'm just looking at what we have written up here, that we don't accommodate that vehicle's size or the space requirement that you might have for a 30, 40-foot unit.
So, I know vehicles are defined, and I would have to look again at the definition of vehicles to give you a more educated answer, so give me a moment here.
Joe, this is Silas. I might have a comment on that. I, I think there's a distinction between a camper that's parked inside or on a church property as part of a homeless encampment and a camper that's parked on city property as maybe directly outside of the homeless encampment or anywhere else on the city right of way. And so, the way I, I mean, I might be missing something, but I don't see any reason why a camper couldn't be part of one of these homeless encampments because a lot of homeless people are living in campers. And as long as it's contained within the private property that this encampment is set up on, a camper that's parked on the city right of way is an entirely different story and then would be subject to the pre-existing city zoning codes as we just discussed. So that's the way I see it, but I'm not sure if that answers anything.
No, I'm clear on that. My only question was, was more, again, technical on how much space do we need? That's fine if somebody's going to bring a camper, and I agree with you, that a lot of people do. How do we want to handle the space? We're just saying a minimum of five parking spots. So we have 35 people max on an encampment, and five people show up with 40-foot trailers. I mean, is there something that we want to put in here that makes sure that that facility has enough of available parking if, in fact, those are the types of guests they want to accommodate? That, that's my only question, not the fact that somebody's going to pull up with it or not. They are. But do we want to put something in here that at least gives a size requirement on how to, to have that capability? And I mean, think about it, campers have the ability to connect power, water, waste, a whole bunch of different things. So, but my question was just simply, do we have something in here that accommodates a sufficient amount of space to actually handle those types of vehicles? That was it. That, that was all I was pointing out.
And just to confirm, vehicle is not a defined term, so arguably, somebody driving an RV could be parking in one of these spots.
Now, is the, the 30-day rule, is that entirely exclusive to city right of ways? Because I, I was obviously understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought even if, like, you know, someone had someone staying in an RV in their driveway, you know, it's entirely off the public right of way, it's on their private property, but my understanding is those people can't occupy it for more than 30 days. Am I wrong with that?
No, that, that's true. 1744.060 says, oops, sorry, I'm in the wrong section here. No, no trailer or recreational vehicle shall be occupied as a residence for more than 30 days within the space of one year unless approved in accordance with Chapter 17.64. So that's not exclusive to right of way, and it's not exclusive to private property. It's everywhere.
How do we police that? Because there's quite a bit of it going on right now in town. I can point to several properties that are not only there permanently, I mean, they have nice little.
Our, our code enforcement officer regulate, does enforcement on that, and she's actively doing so all the time.
Okay. So anyone else? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Getting, getting back to the, the other issue, the way, the way I would read this ordinance is, you know, there, there is a little bit of a conflict between the 30-day and the, and the 180-day allowance in the safe parking. However, if there's a safe parking situation going on that has, you know, notified the city and meets all of these requirements, Tara, I don't, I don't see this as saying that they can't let be an RVs on that site. As with just about every ordinance, when there's a, I'm sure at the end of this, I'm scrolling to see if there's a notice, if there's a conflict between two ordinances, how it's addressed usually says this one will, will overrun it. Now, the intent is to allow for the 180 days, so as long as they're following those regulations at an approved encampment, I think what this says is that, you know, that normal 30-day would not apply on one of these permitted sites. And so Section 8, I think it's the very last page of this, at least last page of the ordinance says, "Conflict, in the event there's a conflict between the provision of this ordinance and any other city ordinance, the provision of this ordinance shall control," which legalese says this one is more important, but they all say that, so I don't know how that works.
Wouldn't we want it to be part of the, their plan? I mean, they have to, they have to create a, a plan document to do their, to do their encampment, and so wouldn't they just have to cover that in their thing, how they're going to handle multiple, or multiple trailer units and things like that as, you know, address it in their plan?
So the, the parking accommodation would not require the, it's not a permit and does not require a plan. We, we could, we could require one, but we just didn't anticipate that. Seems like that would be a lot of administrative burden on the staff for the amount of risk that would be mitigated.
Anyone else before I move on to the recommended motion by staff? Commissioner Johnson. Freiburger? Good? Okay, at this point, would someone like to make a motion to recommend that the city council adopt the proposed amendments to Title 17 SWMC to establish requirements for homeless encampments operated by religious organizations and associated amendments to Chapter 2.90 SWMC consolidated planning procedures to address temporary permitting, to address permitting for temporary homeless encampments? Do I have a first?
I so move.
Commissioner Freiburger has made a first motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second from Commissioner Maddox. At this point, we have a first and a second, first by Commissioner Freiburger, second by Commissioner Maddox. Is there any further discussion? With that, I'm going to go for, in favor or opposed, but I'm going to go one by one. This way, it's clear as to what people's positions are. So all in favor, starting with Commissioner Huggins.
In favor.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Freiburger.
Aye.
Commissioner Maddox.
Aye.
Commissioner Fattizzi.
Aye.
So we are, we are in favor, six, none opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Good job. Good job, staff. Onto our second public meeting, more fun stuff, in my opinion, anyway. Possible amendments to Title 17 SWMC to address retail uses associated with breweries, distilleries, and wineries in the industrial and commercial zones. With that, John or Nicole, would you like to reiterate the overview that we've been, been, been through a couple of times? But anyway, here you go.
I can, I can take this. So in, for the record, on the previous one, you said five, you said six in favor on the...
Correct.
For the approval of the previous ordinance, I believe there's only five commissioners on.
Oh, I apologize, it's five of us. Yep, duh, duh. Oh, I apologize, it's five of us. Yep, duh, duh.
Just, just to be clear for the record, it's five-
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
I would've caught it in a minute, John.
That, that's on, that's on me. Sorry.
Okay. So, um, this, uh, the next public hearing is for amendments to define alcohol production establishments, um, and to add alcohol production establishments as a permitted use in the mixed, commercial, and industrial zone, uh, to make amendments to Chapter seventeen twenty-four to add alcohol production established as a conditional use permit in the central business district. Um, as you can see from the memo, this all, this started with, uh, conversations with the council, um, committee on, um, uh, economic development, uh, ways to encourage, um, breweries. What we had noticed, staff had noticed that, um, breweries are allowed in the industrial zone now, but they are not allowed, uh, to have, um, associated, um, retail areas, particularly restaurants, um, because they're limited to five percent in the industrial zone. So, we wanted to get with the times and see what other cities are doing for breweries, uh, um, as to how they regulate them and how they, what zones they're allowed in, and how they're allowed to have restaurants in cer- certain zones. And, uh, that, through that process, as Nicole was researching this in depth, um, she had the good idea to expand it to wineries and, uh, and distilleries as well. Um, so, we, we expanded it to include, to also address wineries and distilleries. We had, uh, this on the agenda for a public hearing. I think it was in October, but we did not have a quorum, so, um, we didn't, and so we did not have time on the agenda in November to discuss this topic, so we brought it back to the Planning Commission this time for a public hearing. In the meantime, uh, we had some conversations with people that actually are looking at operating a brewery and currently operate a winery. And so, we got some really good feedback on how this regulate, these regulations could affect uh, those uses, and, and in fact, they were very supportive of the way the ordinance was written, but we were able to fine-tune it and go back and do some more research that Nicole provided in the staff report. So, this time, uh, there's, uh, some slight amendments to even make it clear, um, and more research for the Planning Commission to review. So, hopefully, you've had a chance to go through, uh, Nicole's well-written staff report, and, uh, it answers a lot of the questions that had come up at the, uh, September discussion i- in more detail than the, uh, October staff report, I believe, had, so. We're ready to have a public hearing on this and, uh, and, and look forward to hea- hearing the Planning Commission's discussion. That's all I have.
So, prior to opening, I'll go through my little disclosure. If you would like to speak, please state your name and address, or any group or organization you represent, uh, both in the audience as well as online. So, I will now open up our second public hearing at seven twenty-two PM. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to, uh, comment on our possible amendments to Title seventeen?
Yes.
How about it? Please introduce yourself. Thank you.
Yes. Chair Fattizi and commissioners, my name is Terry Sapp. I reside at eight oh four Ferry Street in Seidra Woolley. Uh, however, it will be pertinent to my comments that I also am a farmer. I farm east of Seidra Woolley on a legacy farm that has been in our family three generations, and another nearby farm with my wife, Jean Eagleson, who is here tonight also. And I speak because this topic has been a subject of, uh, substantial study and, uh, investigation by me in a tangential way. I represent here, that I need to disclose here, but I am not representing, in my expressions now, the Agricultural Advisory Board of Skagit County. I am a member, and that agricultural advisory board has been wrestling with the issue, uh, an issue similar to this for several years. The question before the county commissioners has been, shall the agricultural zone allow various kinds of commercial retail enterprises to be sighted within the zone? Some of which are now present but not authorized, and many of which, uh, are, uh, known to be intended in the agricultural zone, some because they have, uh, a, uh, suggested association with agriculture. To the point, some of those are wineries, breweries, distilleries, and restaurants. I'll add one more, uh, flavor to that selection, which is a term, um, remote tasting rooms. This collection of, uh, of, uh, commercial retail kinds of enterprises have, um, a large following, and the county has now to deal with whether allowances should be created to allow such retail enterprises to be in the agricultural zone, which is restricted in many ways to agriculture. I'll come to a point that I think is pertinent to the city in just a moment, but by way of getting there, I want to, uh, uh, apprise you that this issue has been very actively fraught and troubled in King County. Wineries, breweries, distilleries, and remote tasting rooms cropped up in the agricultural zone in the Samamish Valley near Woodenville, which encouraged such things, but it turned out that, uh, enterprising entrepreneurs found that they could place these kinds of facilities in garages, barns, outbuildings, and have a much, um, freer, easier, and less costly, uh, facility for entertaining the public. The rule there had been that they could only be so if they produced this kind of product on-site, but the reason, that's the reason the remote tasting rooms became part of the discussion. That being that some of these facilities were really representing large vintners in the eastern part of the state and were just, uh, showcase tasting rooms. Quickly, I'll close that point by saying, since two thousand seventeen, which an ordinance by the King, by King County was passed, it was challenged by the agricultural interests. It went to the Puget Sound, Central Puget Sound Growth Management Hearings Board, uh, to Superior Court, back to the Hearings Board, and has now been invalidated by the here, the Growth Management Hearings Board, and remanded to King County to rewrite an ordinance. The ordinance is now, uh, uh, in print, and ordinance is in print, not yet officially proposed. Okay, that's King County. It's very instructive for the work I have been doing, trying to understand what we should do in Skagit County. Opportune that you are considering this issue because, to state my case clearly, agricultural interests in this county do not discourage these kinds of activities, but would like to see them sighted in cities, not out scattered hither-nither across a zone that is not intended for them, and cause retail activity, and the issue then becomes, if it's a brewery, should it have a restaurant associated with it? If it has a restaurant, can it have a wedding venue? And so, the, in commercial enterprise, retail-oriented activities start to crop up in the ag zone. It's a very troubled issue right now in the county, and it, the county commissioners are not yet settled. Staff is still working on it, legislation is now being written, hearings have been had, et cetera. I don't mean to take your time with the issues in the county, except to say it would be lovely, in my opinion, to see more encouragement and citing of these kinds of facilities in the cities where sewers, proper water facilities, and proper access by the public to these kinds of, perhaps very suitable kinds of enterprises to many people, should be cited. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe, Tara, you're the only, oh, here we go.
Philip Murray, one oh one West Woodworth, mailing address. See if I can do this. I personally think that they should be, uh, held into the industrial area. Um, you have a lot of bars and stuff in town already. The other thing is, has anybody applied for this? And if you did apply for it, and you have to change the rules, wouldn't they be having to pay like a six hundred dollar fifty, something like that, fee to do this? And you're doing it beforehand, and I do wonder if anybody here on the board has family or anything that is going to be wanting to do this in their own building, which seems like a conflict of interest if they're voting on it or anything like that. Just a thought, and, uh, thank you.
Thank you. I think that's it for our audience participation. Uh, Bill, do we have anyone online that would like to make any comments on the second public hearing? I'm assuming that would be a no. So, at this time, I would like to close second public hearing at seven thirty-one PM and start our, uh, Planning Commission discussion, and we'll start with you, Commissioner Freiburger. How's that?
So, I just had a, um, question for, um, Nicole, um, and let me get my pages up here. So, on page four of the memo, paragraph three. Not including the partial paragraph at the top of the page, but, um, that final sentence says out, outdoor seating areas have been specifically excluded from floor area calculations, and any kitchen floor area is to be counted in the calculation for production floor area. But, um, in every definition that I saw down in the actual individual zones, it looked like the kitchen area was included in the commercial retail. So, I just wanted to clarify which is it, and which one did we want?
Correct that to retail.
Okay. That's all I had.
I'm sorry, we weren't able to hear what Nicole said.
Sorry. Uh, correct that to retail commercial. It should not say production.
Okay. Commissioner Huggins, do you have any, uh, commentary?
Uh, not at this point. Um, I have nobody, uh, in my family who's gonna open a, uh, one of these establishments.
Commissioner Maddox.
Um, I, I like the ordinance as it's currently written. Um, I think the percentages largely reflect what we discussed, or my, at least my memory of what we discussed previously. Um, I, uh, believe it was Mr. Sapp who spoke, and I just wanna, um, thank him for his insightful comments and say that I, too, uh, would much rather see these types of establishments within our city limits, um, than, uh, taking over the agricultural zone. I, um, have been following that discussion, um, and, you know, I certainly am concerned about, uh, the commercialization, uh, uh, or the retailization of the agricultural zone, and, um, I do, uh, have some concern about, uh, the conversion of industrial land in Seidra Woolley, uh, to sort of retail commercial uses, um. As somebody who, uh, you know, has a semi, uh, that's involved with industry, I, I think that, you know, our industrial land is precious, um, but I, I do see the benefit economically of this, and I'm not gonna argue against, uh, this allowance in the industrial zone. And so, I, on, based on all of that, I, I am in favor of the ordinance, and, um, I don't have any further, uh, concerns at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Um, I would second, uh, Commissioner Maddox's comments about, uh, Mr. Sapp's points being very well-taken and very appreciative, and, uh, that's really great insight, and I wholeheartedly agree that, um, the precious ag land that we do have should be reserved for ag purposes. Um, and for the record, um, neither I nor a family member at this time are actively looking to start a brewery or any other sort of alcohol production, uh, facility. Um, I will ask, so, under the industrial use section, uh, so, that'd be paragraph eleven under seventeen twenty-eight oh one oh. Um, I was kinda curious as to why the industrial portion would have a, a less of a minimum than, uh, the CBD would. I would probably promote having more of a production facility, or allowing, um, or encouraging, maybe is the better word, of production within the industrial zone. I mean, I, I fully think that you can easily accommodate, you know, tasting rooms and, and, uh, breweries and whatnot, uh, within the industrial zone. Woodenville is a, a classic example of that in some respects, and so are other municipalities. Um, but maybe keeping to the integrity of what an industrial zone is supposed to be, maybe encouraging those to be more focused, um, on production than necessarily the retail aspect of it. So, I was going to suggest maybe increasing the minimum from fifty percent to sixty percent. Um, I'm not necessarily married to that, but that was just kind of, uh, a thought that I had.
My recollection is that we were discussing, if somebody were to open a small facility, um, if you, if you think of like a distillery, they don't, they don't take up a lot of space for the, the actual work area and storage area if they're small. And I think the idea was to give some flexibility to allow, you know, a small scale like that, still have a tasting room or a small restaurant area without it being, you know, mostly restaurant. Um, I think that was the idea.
Also, uh, Commissioner Johnson, it, the regulations are flip-flop between the, uh, in the CBD, a minimum of sixty percent shall be for retail and commercial use, where, um, in the industrial, a minimum, uh, of fifty percent has to be used for production. So, um-
That, that, that is a good catch. Um, my, my-
It's an oppo, you know, they're, they're written oppositely.
No, that, that is a good catch. Thank you. Uh, my point would still stand that I would think that the industri- industrial zone type facility should be geared more towards the production end of things than the retail end of things, but no, that is a good point. no, that is a good point.
You know, depending on who operates it, though, the minimum is 50%. They could easily want 70% of their floor area. So we're doing a percentage based upon the gross floor area to accommodate whatever, what particular operation they want to do. So I don't really have a problem with that minimum of 50, but I get what you're saying. Anyway, anyone else before I throw my own opinions in here? So first of all, really good job on a lot of your research. I mean, you know, for me, knowing a lot of these jurisdictions, I was curious how they did it. It's a lot of work to dig that stuff up. And Mr. Sapp, you're totally dialed in, and that's exactly what we're trying to accommodate, is to have that, those types of services and operations get out of the agricultural areas and actually have an in-city way of getting something done. But our code's pretty tight. If you're looking at our CBD and the MC and the industrials, I don't see too many garages that you're going to start throwing taps in and all of a sudden you're going to open on up. We're a little bit tighter than that because we want a quality product, right? You want something that the public is going to want to participate in. And a lot of the operations that we've used as examples, the very family oriented is too, where we're not looking at like bar shots and that kind of stuff. It's a very different product at the end of the day, so I really do appreciate everybody's comments, and I thank you. So with that, would somebody like to make a motion to recommend that the city council approve the proposed amendments to SWMC 17.04.030, 17.20.010, 17.24.010, and 17.28.010 to address alcohol production establishments? Need a first and a second?
So moved.
Commissioner Maddox has made a first. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second from Commissioner Freiburger. So at this point, we have a first and second. Is there any further discussion? We'll take that as a no, so I'm going to do what I did before. I'm going to go one by one. Commissioner Huggins, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Commissioner Johnson?
In favor.
Commissioner Freiburger?
In favor.
Commissioner Maddox?
In favor.
Commissioner Fattizi, in favor. So we have five in favor, zero opposed. The motion carries. Thank you. So now moving on to our third public hearing. Requested amendments to the accessory dwelling unit ADU regulations in chapter 17.100 SWMC to address ADUs for spec-built homes. Homes, excuse me. So John or Nicole, would you like to start us off here before I open it up?
All right. So this, if you can remember way back when, when we started on this project, this was proposed, proposed amendments to the ADU regulations to allow spec homes to have ADUs. In other words, when new homes are built by speculation builders, you know, these are not, these are not, not people who are building a house for themselves, but a builder who builds a house and then just tries to sell it on the open market. It was requested by one of our local developers, BYK Construction, to amend our ADU regulations so that when they build these spec homes, they can build them with an ADU as part of their marketing idea. And at the last planning commission meeting, we had a discussion with Paul Woodmancy of BYK Construction, came in and spoke to the planning commission about what he was trying to achieve with his proposed language. The planning commission approved the staff to go ahead and draft some language within code to achieve the goals of the, of what BYK Construction was trying to achieve. And so that is what we proposed, what staff put together in this, in this draft. It's actually quite a small number of words to achieve the goal that BYK was aiming to implement. And those are on page seven of this staff report. And so the language, I'll just read it because it is short enough. Under the section in the ADU ordinance where it says that the property owner must live on site, we added the language saying, "Spec homes may be constructed with an associated ADU under the following conditions. Prior to sale, the spec builder shall notify the prospective purchasers in writing of the limitations on ADUs and the requirements of chapter 17100 Seadrill Municipal Code, including the owner occupancy requirement." During the, then number two, during the closing process of the sale, a covenant stating that the owner resides, the property shall be signed by the purchaser and recorded with the Skagit County Auditor by the title company. And number three, the buyer is required to submit a copy of the recorded covenant to the planning department after recording. So what this says is if a spec builder builds a house with an ADU, staff can review and approve that. And then they'll be required to notify whoever's buying the property of all of the regulations on ADUs, which is in chapter 17100, including, and most importantly, the owner occupancy requirement. And then the owner needs to sign something and record it and then return it to city staff so that we know that, that they are aware of the ADU, of the homeowner occupancy requirements, and they know that they'll be following those rules. The way this is intended is the spec builder would still have to get an ADU permit, much like a homeowner does now when they want to get a, an ADU. They would apply for an ADU permit before they do the construction. So we would still require that of the, of the spec builder, which we could, in theory, just run at the same time as, as the building permit.
So this is just one really mind-blowing point before we even start this, in that line number two, where you have the, "Recorded with the Skagit County Auditor by the title company," the correct language would be by the closing agent. That recording will show up on a title, but it's actually the closing agent that does the recordings. It could be attorneys, it could be departments within title companies, it could be companies that just specialize in the closing process. So technically, that's not exactly correct.
Then, you know, I actually didn't really like that. I struggled with, with that last line. So I'm wondering if it would just make sense for us to say, "Property shall be signed by the purchaser and recorded with the Skagit County Auditor," period. Because it really doesn't matter who records it.
Correct. Yeah, no, that works too. That's fine.
So that would be my recommendation, is just to strike the "by the title company" portion of line two.
That works. Sorry, I didn't mean to delay our opening. Thank you. Is there anything else? Okay. At this point, I will open up public hearing number three at 7:48 PM. And back to what my normal disclosure is, if you would like to speak, please state your name and address or any group or organization you represent. So with that, is there anyone in the audience that has any comment on public hearing number three? I will take that as a no. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
And a reminder, you know, try to keep it close to three minutes.
Duly noted. Is there anyone online that has any comments regarding public hearing number three? I will also take that as a no. So at this point, I will close public hearing number three at 7:49 PM and on to planning commission discussion. And I'll start with you, Commissioner Huggins. I'm just skipping around. There's no rhyme or reason to it. Pat?
Well, I think everybody knows my concerns with ADUs in general, and I think I voted against the ordinance originally on this one. So I, I am inclined to vote against this as well. I think you guys have done a great job of putting it together and covering the topics, but it still doesn't alleviate my concerns for people who, the fact that it doubles the zoning density in some cases and also makes it so that people, if the developers are already building spec houses on the lots, that may preclude, depending on how things happen in the future, people who need one at a later date from, from having the opportunity to build one on their own property. So anyway, I'm inclined against it at this point, but not totally opposed, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
I share Commissioner Huggins' sentiments, and if it wasn't for the fact that, you know, there, it really is on the horizon, some legislation being pushed, I think, much like the first public hearing, I think it's good that the city's getting ahead of the game on this and putting in some regulations so that it can be, you know, woolly-centric with our thumbprint on it versus a edict from Olympia. So I'm glad that, you know, in that, in that respect, I'm glad that we're doing this. You know, if it wasn't for that pressure, I, I'm not, I'm not philosophically, I'm not, not entirely against ADUs. I do see their value. I do think that property owners, to some degree, well-regulated, should be able to add these. With that, you know, I did support it, and with that being said, you know, I feel like this is a very reasonable ask from BYK. It makes sense. I think it was just a simple oversight on our part. And I, I think that it, it's kind of like what you said, Commissioner Huggins, earlier, you know, we take things, you know, 95% of the way, and then we make adjustments. And I think that this is a classic example of that and a good catch by BYK, and this is just one of those adjustments that we're needing to clean up a little bit. So, you know, I, I don't have a whole lot, I don't have anything negative to say against it, I don't have a whole lot to say for it. I, I would just say, and I know I asked Paul at the last meeting about parking, and I know that as a developer, that's an added cost, and he, he talked about that being an added cost. But, you know, my concern still exists with parking, you know, providing enough spaces, you know. I, I just have a feeling, having lived in multifamily housing for a significant amount of time, you know, just because it's a smaller space doesn't mean that there's not going to be more vehicles. We're a vehicle-centric society, and, you know, there's going to be, you know, significant others, even if it's a single person, there's going to be significant others coming, you know, frequently friends coming. Chances are, they'll probably find ways to save costs more by trying to get roommates or, you know, landlords will try to increase their rental income by adding additional people if possible. So I just feel like two spaces would be a more appropriate amount. I realize it's a little bit off-topic from what we're talking here, but since we're opening it up and re-reviewing this, this particular ordinance, I, I would strongly recommend that we move from one off-street parking spot to two. That's, that's my only real critique at this point of this ordinance.
Commissioner Freiburger?
So something that Mr. Woodmancy had mentioned in his suggested added language was that the builder must acknowledge the requirement of the covenant with the closing of their property. And when looking at the proposed language, I was wondering if there's anything, I don't see anything in here that the builder has to sign anything saying that they will notify the buyer, unless I'm just missing it. Because we don't really have any way of controlling what happens once we finalized a permit. So unless it's built into the accessory dwelling unit permit, that it won't be issued without the prospective buyer signing off, but these are spec homes, so presumably that happens before it's bought, potentially. So is there an issue there? That's all I wanted to...
Well, the first line that, number one there on page seven says, "Prior to the sale, the spec home builder shall notify prospective purchasers in writing of the limitations of ADUs..."
And do they have to...
"...and the requirements..."
Oh, sorry.
And I was completing, reading it, "And the requirements of chapter 17100 SWMC, including the owner occupancy requirement." So that doesn't, was there something more that we wanted to require of the builder?
So they have to notify them in writing. Are they then supposed to provide that notification to the city as proof? Is there a requirement for that as part of the ADU process for spec homes?
Yeah, there, there kind of is. I'm just looking at it from a more practical standpoint of exactly what would happen, and since it's already on, on the books anyway, I agree with Commissioner Johnson that it's just something that we missed. So what, a builder is going to sell a home to somebody, right? I look at this more as an option. It's like, hey, you know, it's like doing like a certain type of kitchen cabinets, whatever. So the builder says, hey, you have the option if you want an ADU, and here's that notice, but this is what you need to do. Now, at closing, and that number two there, that this needs to be recorded, that is their legal obligation to say that, hey, I'm going to be compliant with SWMC 17.100, and that, that's like a contingency that would be, need to be satisfied at that closing. We haven't had this happen yet, but that's just my assumption of how that would definitely work, and that's the, the way that gets done in all types of different things, not just ADUs. So that, that's where that teeth is, is in that second, that second line there.
Except for if that happens after the permit has already been approved, and then there is nothing to guarantee that...
Yeah, you can't close on it. You can't close on it until you satisfy that contingency.
Okay.
I mean, you might have a situation where all of a sudden the deal falls apart and they, the buyer loses their earnest money. So second buyer comes on in, hey, here's the same thing. It's got an ADU, and would that limit the potential, the builder? I mean, they'd kind of be on the hook for it, but they'd have to have a very specific buyer that wants that ADU to be compliant with those second terms.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I was just thinking, if the covenant hasn't been recorded yet, who's to say they can't just close it?
It happens at, it happens at closing, yeah.
Without, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's all types of contingencies in real estate deals, but this would be one of them. Anyway, I saved Commissioner Maddox for last, so Commissioner Maddox?
I'm in favor of it. I mean, you all know my oppositions to the owner occupancy requirement, but I think this makes sense. I think ADUs make sense, you know, in general terms and provide much-needed housing options. I know that if I was to move or buy a new place, it would have to have an ADU or the ability to build an ADU as my in-laws live with me, and so... And so, anyway, I'm in favor. I don't have any other further comments.
Okay, thank you. So everyone knows my position. It's already in the code. You could already do it now. So I look at this as something that we missed. And as long as we're clear on the process of the owner occupancy based upon what's in the code, okay, I think this is just something that we missed, and I'm glad it was brought to our attention. And it does give people flexibility, and I think we used this as one example. Let's say you have a retired couple that is looking for additional income, or that they have relatives or somebody that needs to live with them. I could see a lot of situations where elderly parents need to live with a family. It just makes a lot of sense if you can get this done on, on new construction. There's going to be more continuity in the design, and I think it'll flow a lot easier. So at this particular point, would someone like to make a motion to recommend that the City Council approve the proposed amendments to Chapter 17.100 SWMC? Do I have a first?
So moved.
Commissioner Maddox has a first. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Johnson has a second. He beat you to it. Okay. At this time, is there any further discussion? Okay, so with that being, I will take a vote. For all in favors, and again, I will start one by one. Commissioner Huggins, in favor or opposed?
I'm going to vote in favor this time, but I'd like to express my feelings that I'm doing, don't like this because the state of Washington is driving this process and not the community of Cedar Woolley. But yes, I'm in favor.
Duly, duly noted, Commissioner. I, I hear you. Commissioner Johnson?
I support it. Aye.
Commissioner Freiburger?
Aye.
Commissioner Maddox?
Aye.
Commissioner Fatizi, aye. Motion passes and carries five zero. So on to our final portions of the meeting. There's no unfinished business. Now, John, I'm going to throw this out to you on the new business, the, Mr. Sapp and Jean are here. How do you want to start this? Do you want to do an intro on this and have these folks come on up?
Oh, yeah.
And how do you want to do this?
I'm going to, I'm going to have to, there's, there's a lot more going on here than their specific request.
Okay.
So there's, there's a lot to unpack.
Okay.
All right. So hopefully, the planning commission had a chance to read the memo. There's, there's, as I said, there's a lot going on. So last week, the City Council passed a historic preservation ordinance. And what that enables is, that's created a historic review board, it's created a mechanism to designate historic properties, it's created a mechanism to create historic districts. And then, further down the line, there's some other ramifications of that process that is where we get into the discussion of the SAPS-specific project. So before we get into the special valuation part of what the historic, what the historic preservation ordinance allows, I need to talk to the planning commission about all of the other major factors of this that need to be done before we can even discuss any specific projects. So as you, as you hopefully saw in the ordinance, the, the ordinance created a historic preservation commission. Now, that's a five-member historic, or a five-member commission that is going to be populated with people that are, that are, have special expertise in historic preservation building, and that is specified in the ordinance. Before the council can, can appoint that historic preservation board, they wanted, they wanted the historic preservation board to exist, largely so we could address the SAPS project. So what we did is we wrote in the ordinance, until such time that the historic preservation board is created, the planning commission will act as the historic preservation board. So that gives you, there's the planning commission, the ability to act as the historic preservation commission in the, in the meantime. So the core duties of the historic preservation commission is to review which properties in the city have possible historic meaning and could possibly be put on a historic registry list. So that's the first step, is identifying properties in the city that have historic merit. And it goes for properties, not just buildings. So it could be cemeteries, and you probably saw some language in here about, you know, if you're designating a cemetery as historic. So it's, you know, a historic property is much broader meaning than just a specific property. It's not particularly relevant to our conversation today, but it's, it's an important concept to understand. Once we've created the inventory of historic places, then the commission can review applications for placement or removal from Cedar Woolley Register of Historic Places. So that is the actual list of what gets designated. So we've got, hey, here's our wish list over here. That's our, that's the first list that we create. And then from that, we, we pick and choose from applications and say, do we want the, any of these properties to actually be on our historic register? And that's a much more meaningful action. And that is something that you'll be doing today. The commission's also tasked with reviewing building projects related to any property that's on the historic register of places, the Cedar Woolley Register of Historic Places. So say there's a property that is designated on the Cedar Woolley Historic Register, and they want to change a window. So that would come to the, the Historic Preservation Commission for review to make sure that it meets all of the regulations in place for historically-registered buildings. Now, that's, you know, changing a window is, you know, a very specific minor thing, but it could also go for, you know, if they want to do an addition, or if they want to do a remodel, or if they want to do significant changes to the siding, weatherization upgrades, those sorts of things. With, once a property is on the historic register, then those all get reviewed by the, by the local review board. And the reason, the reason that we do that is, properties that are listed on the historic register have the opportunity to apply to the Skagit County Assessor for a reduction in their tax assessment. And that's the next thing that the, this planning commission is going to be addressing today is, the SAP Eaglesston property has been designated on the State Historic Registry Board. They've requested to be put on our historic registry as well, and then the Skagit County Assessor will be able to assess their property at a lower tax rate. In specific, their, their property is, will receive a tax reduction on the value based on, well, you know, it's a, it's a little complicated. How the assessor's going to apply it is unclear to me because that's not in statute, but the requirements are that they have to spend a certain value of their property on a restoration project in order to be eligible. And so they did do a restoration project, and you probably saw some numbers in the packet that they submitted stating how much they spent on the restoration versus the assessed value of their home prior to the restoration. And then, so they had to meet that certain threshold in order to be qualified for this tax reduction. And, and the historic, the State Historic Board reviewed that, and it does meet that criteria. So I have three requests of the planning commission, and I, and I put those in, in bold in the memo, starting on page three and continuing onto page four. One is to, is to add the house, add the 804 Ferry Street house to the Cedar Woolley Register of Historic Places, and then enter into an historic preservation agreement with the applicants for that property, and that is included as an attachment. That's something that the state statutes require. As you can see, RCW 84.26.0502 requires this agreement. And then presuming the Historic Preservation Commission wants to do that, then we'd make a motion to approve and sign the certificate of approval for special valuation on historical property for 804 Ferry Street. And that's, that's a document that we then send to the assessor, saying, yes, we certify that it meets the requirements for this lower assessed valuation. And here's our John Hancock, and so you can go ahead and do that to the assessor. We should also, before we add this property to the, to the official Cedar Woolley Register of Historic Places, we should probably just make mention that 804 Ferry Street is a property of significance, and we, we'd like to put that on our Cedar Woolley inventory of possible historic places before we actually put it on the registry. That way, we've got belt and suspenders and everything. I think this is the way the state statutes and our new ordinance 20, 2029-22 requires us to follow this process in order to get the SAP and Eaglesston property, their request from the assessor for a lower taxation value. This has been a little bit of a push time-wise, because the state statutes also say that any property that's been added to the historic, the State Historic Registry is enabled for their special tax valuation, but it needs to be done so by, to summer 31st of the year that they were given the, given the certification by the, by, since the date that they were put on the registry, the state registry, in that same year. So that's, that's why this has moved a little quicker than these sorts of things normally do. And hopefully, that gave you enough information to at least get you asking questions, because there's a lot here, and I'm happy to answer any additional questions. There's a lot of information in the packet, and I recognize it's been a long night already, and you've had a lot of, a lot on your agenda today. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and then if there's anything specific to the property that you have questions about, we can point that to the SAPS. I think you all recognize that the property, I'm sorry, not the SAP, but Mr. Sapp and Ms. Eagleson, I apologize. And then I think we all recognize that 804 Ferry Street is the former Cedar Woolley Hospital, and that was its historical significance. As you can see in the notification that it has been added to the state registry, it's referred to as the Dr. James and Margaret Mills House on the Washington State Historic Registry. So that's my spiel. If you've got any questions, let's have them.
Just, just one, from a point of procedure, you have three separate motions here. They're three separate motions.
Yes.
So we would do three separate motions, three separate. And under what jurisdiction? Under planning commission or, or the Historic Preservation Committee? Who are we acting as in this particular capacity?
You're, you're acting as the Historic Preservation Committee?
Right.
Commission.
Mm-hmm.
However, you know, we have clearly stated that the planning commission is the Historic Preservation Commission. So it, I, I haven't, haven't seen any reason to make a clear demarcation. That's why we're running this on the Cedar Woolley Planning Commission agenda, and I didn't create a separate agenda in a separate meeting, because the planning commission is designated as that commission.
Okay, thank you.
Very similar to when we did the shoreline assessment. I think we were technically switching hats there as well, as a...
I think that one, we actually created a separate agenda and everything. But, but similar, yes.
So just, just one comment on, on historic districts in general. When you define a property as a historic site, any future owner now is pretty much bound to totally independent people that tell them what they can and can't do with their home. And it's double-edged sword. I, I get it. I'm, I'm just saying, because I see it in the real estate business, that's what I do. A lot of people stay away from the historic homes because they don't want to be bound by some, you know, committee in a, in a, in a, in a community. It's just, I'm just throwing it out there. Not anything to do with this.
May I address that?
Sure, absolutely.
I am. Jean Eagleson, I'm with Terry Sapp, the co-owner of 804 Ferry Street. The Washington State Heritage Registry does not make those commitments. It doesn't require that you have it open to the public unless it cannot be viewed from the street.
Mm-hmm.
We could tear our house down. We're not going to.
Mm-hmm.
Love this house. We believe it's a very important part of the history of Cedar Woolley. But the state registry doesn't limit the uses or modifications. The language that's used for what's being discussed here for the city of Cedar Woolley would have a process by which people would have to go to the city commission in order to make changes, additions, and I don't imagine the city would allow you to paint an historic house fluorescent pink, for example. But I was surprised, as I started this process with the State Heritage Registry, that there were not those kinds of strict limitations on what you could do with the property.
No, I hear you, but in this particular case, the city would be putting an ordinance in place that absolutely not only monitors, but manages and effectively oversees the can and can't to a particular property. That, that's all I'm bringing up.
Right. And also...
I think it's important to point out that the, the properties that are added to the actual register, that they'll be applying to the city to be given that designation.
Right.
It's not something that the city just starts going out and saying, we want this one on the register...
Right.
Despite the property owner's wishes.
Right. And I think it's also possible to choose to have your house removed from the registry, that you could appeal to the city to be removed, and a new owner, for example, might choose to do that.
And if I remember correctly from, from when I read the packet, the tax designation is for a period, right? It's only for like a 10-year...
Ten years.
Period. So at the end of that 10 years, even though you're, you're still on the registry, does it then have to continuously be re-upped and re-reviewed by the commission? does it then have to continuously be re-upped and re-reviewed by the commission for, just strictly for the tax, um, valuation purposes? Not necessarily for like being actually on the registry per se?
My reading of the RCW is that that is not specifically addressed. What would have to happen, however, is that the homeowner or property owner would have to make additional improvements that are appropriate in terms of restoration. And it has to be done in a twenty-four month period. And then you perhaps could submit again to Skagit County Assessor's Office this, uh, form that is the, oh gosh, it has a really long name. It is the Application and Certification of Special Valuation in Improvements to Historic Property. It's a Department of Revenue Form, which is submitted to the assessor. The assessor then notifies, in this case, Dave Thomas notified the county commissioners and the city of Cedar Woolley for a local review board to review that application. What he heard back from both the commissioners and the city of Cedar Woolley, there is no such thing. County commissioners don't have one? The city didn't have one. In fact, he told me that the, I think he's been in the, his office for twenty-five years. He has never known of anybody else other than us who have tried to do this. And so Cedar Woolley is really in first place. I don't know, is there a race here, Mr. Pullman, uh, to get this done? But it is the first time, I believe, that it's been done. So I don't think anybody here today knows whether or not that ten-year period could somehow be extended. But it would have to be done very cleverly, um, I would think, and maybe not at all. But if it's even possible, you'd have to put more money into restoration efforts. Twenty-four month period, apply and go through all of these steps. It is a multi-step process. And, and one thing I'd like to explain about why we're doing this, it does feel like a football game. And I use this analogy at the, uh, city council meeting also. I don't know, it's two minutes left or a minute left in the game, and maybe we're on the five-yard line, but we'd really like to get across that goal line, and it has to be done by December thirty-first in the same year when you make the application to your county assessor. Well, you can't do that until your property is on the Heritage Registry. The body that meets to make those decisions only meets three times a year. Usually they meet in June, but this year they didn't meet until towards the end of July, July twenty-second. So we weren't notified in writing, I needed that certificate to send to Dave Thomas. We didn't know officially until the beginning of August. And so that's why things have, um, been pushed onto such a short time.
So, so you've started the application process? You're already, you're already there on certain, uh, determinations and notices that you've received?
Well, I started the application process in terms of my research in, um, uh, let's say November, I think, of, uh, twenty nineteen. We purchased the, uh, house, uh, I'm sorry, I misspoke. We purchased the house on May twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen. We received a building permit from the city on December fourth, twenty nineteen. We had a goal to keep as much as possible of all of the original elements in the house. The house was in very poor condition. It had not been well-maintained, but it had really good bones, and it had some absolutely elegant, um, beautiful craftsmanship features. And it wasn't too long after we purchased the house that we learned it had been a hospital. Lots of people know that. One of, uh, your classmates, Cedar Woolley classmates, Glenn Allen, city council member, says he's pretty sure his dad was born in Valley Hospital, as it was known from nineteen sixteen to nineteen twenty-nine. And for all but two of those years, nineteen eighteen to nineteen twenty-nine, it was the only hospital in the eastern part of Skagit County, and it served people all the way up Concrete Marble Mount, all the way upriver. It closed in nineteen twenty-nine as a hospital because Memorial Hospital, the first large public hospital, was opened then. And this tradition of physicians having hospitals in their homes ended pretty much at that point in Skagit County. So I started, after we moved into the house, and the restoration was done during the pandemic, that was interesting, um, and had its challenges, and Terry and I functioned as the general contractors on the job. Um, so our efforts, certainly mine at that time, didn't include doing the research on the house. But once we moved in, I started more investigations, started with the Cedar Woolley Museum, and I submitted the first draft of the application to the Heritage Registry in March of two thousand twenty-two, and then the second draft a month later. And that was the first round for two thousand twenty-two. And so then they met on July twenty-second to approve it. After we heard from the Skagit County Assessor that there was no local review board in the county or in the city of Cedar Woolley, in October, we wrote to Mayor Johnson describing our situation. She was familiar with the house because the day the building inspector came to give us our occupancy permit, he brought her with him, Tony Nixon, and brought Julia Johnson, Mayor Johnson, uh, to the house. And so she saw it in its unfurnished, almost finished, um, state, and was aware of the history of the house as, as well as seeing it in its, uh, remodeled, uh, condition. We went to the November twenty-second city council meeting with our plea. Is there any way this can possibly be done by the end of the year? And, uh, as you know, then they came back and passed an, an ordinance on December fourteenth. So you're, I, I guess it has been handed to you to be essentially this local review board, is what the RCW refers to throughout its language as the entity that will approve that application with a really long name that went to the county assessor. And it is on pages in the material that you received. Twenty to twenty-two, uh, is the text that accompanied the DOR form. And it includes a description of the rehabilitation, the specific tasks that were done. And it's everything from rewiring the whole house and all of the original lighting fixtures that were there, having those rewired so they're in use. Uh, repairing lots of lap and plaster that was in poorer condition, the entire interior and exterior of the house. Those were painted. We had to replace all of the plumbing in the kitchen and in both bathrooms. And those were modernized. We work with Mark Christ, who's a local architect. Uh, he did the design for the kitchen and the bathrooms. We put in a new boiler, and we use the original radiators. It's fabulous heat, and some of the radiators are just gorgeous pieces of, um, heritage equipment, historic equipment. The floors in the house are a marvel. The first floor has one-inch maple, two-inch maple? Two-inch maple, two-inch maple. It's laid continuously in this really elaborate pattern on all of the first floor.
Beautiful.
Except one room. And we're pretty sure that was the operating room because we have the original fuse box. And, a, a, and when we purchased the house, there was still some knob and tube wiring in the house, and our insurance agent had said, excuse me, but, you know, you, you, you can't have that. And the electrician who worked on the house primarily said the rest of the wiring was scary, truly scary. Home, homegrown versions, he thought, probably. But this original electrical panel is there, and the fuses are labeled. And operating room is mentioned, and this one room on the main floor had fur flooring. Everything else is this gorgeous maple, fur flooring. Three holes down to the basement. Drain holes, probably, we guess. That's Terry's office now. We kept all of the single-pane windows, except those on the north side of the house where the kitchen remodeling took place. And there were a lot of broken windows, and the leaded windows are, actually, we've been educated, it's zinc. They were so loose that they would shake when you closed the front door, so all of that was re-glazed. We had a tremendous group of craftsmen, they were all men, who worked on the house, who just had tremendous skills, and they turned what had been, um, a house in very poor repair into a really lovely dwelling. And we're, we felt from the beginning that the dwelling deserved to be restored. It really deserved it. It had this great history, and the more I learned about the history of Dr. Mills, who's quite a character, if you read that far through your whole long, uh, app, the packet you got, it includes our application to the state heritage registry. So there is a section of that that talks about Dr. Mills and his life story, which is very colorful. But its feature in the community as a hospital is what really, uh, anchors its historic value along with the fact that it is an excellent example of craftsman architecture. It has some semi-unique features in terms of the windows in the house and, and some other small details. So we are, um, here tonight hoping that the motions, Mr. Pullman's, um, memo is thorough and, and addresses the issues that, uh, you all get to discuss and face tonight. Bottom line, we are so grateful. We really appreciate the time and effort that has been, um, that's happened from Mayor Johnson, the city council, uh, Mr. Charlie Bush, Mr. Pullman and his staff. We feel like they've moved a mountain in a very short amount of time. We are that five-yard line place on the, uh, football analogy. And so with that, if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them. If you want to know the specifics of the construction that was done, Terry will answer those questions, because he was the on-site.
Yeah, I don't think that's necessary. You have done such an amazing job here. I've done my share of remodels over the years, and I had a similar property back east that, uh, I'm surprised the coal didn't start to shake when I saw mullions in here. We just did a whole bunch of work here in our downtown business, in our central business district, and that came up on a thing, and it just got, it just got silly.
No, I don't want to talk about it.
Yeah, I know, that's why you were like, oh my God, zinc mullions, oh! But yeah, no, doing remodels like this to properties like that, it, it's, it's a commitment. And I guess our job here tonight is to evaluate what everybody did, and there was just so much work that was done, and to get your folks across the, uh, finish line. So anybody have anything else to, uh, add into this?
Well, to, Kay, piggyback off your football analogy, I, I hope that we hand the ball off and we don't pass it, if, if you get my, uh, Super Bowl drift.
No, 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 no. You got these, you run it over the coal line, you don't throw it.
No, I, I know this property. I, I actually still distinctly remember driving by there as a kid and my mom telling me, oh, that's the old hospital. And I said, what? That, that's a house. And it just kind of boggled my mind that at one point, houses were used as hospitals. And, and you guys have, um, I haven't been to your pla, I've driven, only driven ever by it, but from the pictures that you guys provided, um, and the amount of work that you obviously did, I mean, it, it's quite a remodel, and you've really breathed life back into a very, very beautiful home. I love, I love craftsman homes. Them unto themselves are, the, the real craftsman homes are, are of historic value in my mind. And, you know, to me, that this, you know, this makes a lot of sense. I do a lot of, um, in my line of work, I do help a lot of people with ag and timber and forest land continue to, continue on with open space, um, tax designations. And so this, in my mind, is very analogous to that, where, uh, it's the government, society, community recognizing the value that a certain piece of property has in its character, in this case, in its historic character, and that has value unto itself. And with the amount of, uh, funds and labor that you've invested into it to maintain that value and that, um, that historic importance to the community, you know, is a way to earn that, that tax credit back, very similar to preserving ag, you know, where we, we want to preserve ag, and so the government encourages it by having open space tax evaluations and, and whatnot. And, but you have to, there, there's give and take, right? You can't just like get the designation and just run with this, you know, lower evaluation. But you guys have clearly put that, that money into it. So it makes a lot of sense in my mind.
And I would comment that the, uh, dollar amount that you see, uh, the requirement is that you spend at least twenty-five percent of the original market value in a twenty-four month period prior to the time that you make the application to be, uh, submit that to the county assessor. If it had been a thirty-six month period, that number would be much greater because a lot of our expenses started in two thousand nineteen and into the first part of twenty twenty. And so we had, um, it's a much greater expenditure than what you see, what we spent, met that twenty-four month period requirement. But our expenditures are actually quite a lot greater.
Market value is tough because it's a moving target period. But I had interest rates at two and a half percent, a heck lot different two years ago than it is today, it's six and a half percent. So, anyway. Anyone else? Hey, John, I can combine this into one motion. Well, we can get the three separate entities here. It's easier to bring this all together as one instead of three separate ones. What are your thoughts on that?
I'd say for simplicity's sake, let's, let's keep it as the three. They're already written out for you to, it'll just take a moment each to do.
Okay.
I would also like the, the commission to, um, you know, note that this house at least belongs on the, um, the historic, uh, the, the historic inventory before we move on, move it on from the historic inventory to the historic registry.
Okay, so that would be a fourth motion.
Uh, sure.
Okay, could you give us the language on that?
Be that formal, but if you wanted to go down that road, that, that would not be a bad thing.
I want to keep it within the structure you have right now. What would that be? What would the language be?
I can make a motion, uh, to add eight oh four Ferry Street, uh, the Dr. James and Margaret Mills House to the Cedar Woolley Register of Historic Places.
Do I have this?
John, that's what, John, that's what we're looking for, right?
Well, we're looking to the, for the, we also have a designation, uh, first, we need to designate it to the, uh, um, to, to the in, historic inventory before we add it to the registry. So, um, maybe we should vote on that previous motion to table it or, or put it down for now.
Okay, so that's the Cedar Woolley Historic Registry?
Or amend it.
Okay, how about I amend that motion to add it to, uh, the inventory of historic places?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, is there a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a second by Commissioner Freiburger. Any further discussion? We'll take that as a no, so we will go to a vote. Commissioner Freiburger. Motion number one.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Maddox?
Aye.
Commissioner Huggins?
Yes, and I congratulate you.
Yes, and I congratulate you on completing a beautiful job.
Yeah, right on. And Commissioner Fattizi, aye as well. So that's a 5-2-0. Motion number one carries. So on to.
The next motion would be to make a motion to add 804 Ferry Street, Dr. James and Margaret Mills House to the Seidra Woolley Register of Historic Places.
Okay, would somebody like to repeat that?
I would, I would like to add 804 Ferry Street, the Dr. James and Margaret Mills House, as the first property to the Seidra Woolley Register of Historic Places.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second by Commissioner Maddox. Is there any further discussion on the motion? I assume the answer is no. So we will now take a vote. Commissioner Freiburger.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Maddox?
Aye.
Commissioner Huggins?
Aye.
Commissioner Fattizi, aye. Motion carries, 5-0. On to motion number three. I think that's where we pick up on your list, John? The one in the recommendation?
So, no, yeah, number five in bold there, the, on page four, to make a motion to enter into a historic preservation agreement with the applicants, Gene Eagleston and Terry Sap. That is attached, is attachment four to the memo.
Okay, and that would be the second motion on this list. Okay? So would someone like to make a motion to enter the historic preservation special valuation agreement with Gene Eagleston?
That's not, that's the wrong one. It's the, make a motion to enter into a historic preservation agreement with the applicants, Gene Eagleston and Terry Sap.
Okay, would somebody like to?
I will make a motion to enter into a historic preservation agreement with the applicants, Gene Eagleston and Terry Sap, attachment number four of our memo that we're working on.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
I have, I have a motion by Commissioner Maddox and a motion and a second by Commissioner Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Guess the answer is no. On to the vote. Commissioner Freiburger.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Maddox?
Aye.
Commissioner Huggins?
Aye.
Commissioner Fattizi, aye. Motion carries, 5-0. On to our next motion. Which one would you like me to start with, John?
So that is number six on page four of the memo. To make a motion to approve and sign the certification of approval for special valuation on historic property for 804 Ferry Street, which is attachment five of your memo.
And it's on your third, third motion to work, on the recommendation, okay. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve and sign the certification of approval for special valuation on historical property for 804 Ferry Street?
Aye, so move.
Do I have a, I didn't make the motion. I was, okay, that's, so that's a first by Commissioner Freiburger. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second from Commissioner Maddox. Any further discussion? Assuming that's no. So on to the vote. Commissioner Freiburger.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Maddox?
Aye.
Commissioner Huggins?
Aye.
Commissioner Fattizi, aye. Motion carries, passes, 5-nothing. What else do we have left, ladies and gentlemen?
So that concludes the, the portion of the evening with the Historic Preservation Commission. And so now we can move on to Planning Commission discussion and information items. And there is one thing on the agenda there.
Okay, and that would be for a new planning commissioner appointment. So, John, take it off. Do we have an applicant?
Like, I'd like to acknowledge that the mayor recommended appointment and the planning and the city council appointed Mr. Paul Koch, I believe is how he pronounces his name, it's C-O-C-K-E. He will be on the Planning Commission starting January of 2023 for a six-year term. And that's.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to him. I don't, I don't see him in the audience today. Otherwise, we could give him a round of applause.
Would someone, Mr. Koch's background, do you know?
I do. It's actually in the last city council agenda packet is his, is his letter. I don't have it in front of me. If you're interested, his, his letter of interest is included on the consent agenda of the December 14th city council meeting. And I suppose I could email that out to you at some point. I just don't have it in front of me. I'm sorry.
Just a question.
Sounded like you had some planning background, actually.
That'd be great. Yeah. So at this time, is there anything good for the order? Anybody wants to go through besides, happy holidays to everybody from me and looking forward to an awesome 2023?
I want to congratulate you guys on a historic moment being added to as the first property to the Historic Registry and being, I guess, the first in Skagit County to, to do this. So I guess we're, we're all kind of part of a bit of a piece of history there unto itself. So.
First place.
History, history upon history. So congratulations on that and very happy for you guys and.
And back at you. You did a historic thing right now.
You're welcome. You earned it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. And speaking for myself, if there is any point going forward with this, what will be a committee that gets, a commission that gets formed in 2023, if there's ever a role for, you know, a volunteer who can, who has some skills, I am certainly now very interested in this.
Yeah, make that offer, because it's important to have people with background, especially on a project like this. You dealt with the mulleons of the world.
I'm interested. And I have a really good relationship with Michael Hauser, who's the state architectural historian.
Awesome.
He's the person to whom at DAHB, where these applications for state registry are submitted, we had many phone conversations and lots of editing back and forth of the draft of our applications to the State Heritage Registry. He's a very helpful professional.
Fantastic. Anyone else? Okay, with that, meeting is adjourned, 8:47 PM, and thank you and happy holidays, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Awesome job, John and Nicole.
Good night, eh?
Thank you.
Did we have to formally vote on the adjournment?
Oh, yeah, that, I'm sorry. Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?